Good evening. Welcome to the Warwick School Committee's special virtual meeting of Thursday, July 16th, 2020. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 2005 issued by the Governor of the State of Rhode Island, this meeting will be conducted by electronic communication only. Members of the public wishing to access this meeting may do so at This time we call the meeting to order. All in favor? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The I's have it, thank you. This time we will proceed to public comment. Mr. Bonang, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have five, which isn't too bad tonight. Our first public comment is from Amy Bailey. Says, "My son will be entering the sixth grade in Warwick. I am extremely concerned about the possibility of him being in full-person classes every day. Obviously, it would be physically impossible to adequately socially distance the children in such a crowded setting. Schools have difficulty containing stumps, bugs, lice, and the flu. How will they possibly be able to contain this? It seems reckless on many levels, and I am wondering if the governor's announcement has political motivations behind it. Overall, I think she has done a fantastic job with the pandemic, but I think she is making a grave mistake with schools. I myself am in a high-risk group. My parents are elderly. Does that mean that my son cannot see the grandparents in person during the entire school year? It seems to me that the only logical solution is some form of hybrid where the children are stacked by day. How likely is it that a hybrid model will be adopted for Warwick? I can say that I am unwilling to send my child to school this year if it is in full person without adequate social distancing. In such a case, are you allowing parents the option to choose full remote learning?" Our next comment is from Kate Hanley. "Good evening. There have been districts that are offering virtual distance learning as an option for students with immune-compromised family members, and even some for those not yet comfortable with in-person learning. Will Warwick be affording families with immune-compromised students and/or family members the opportunity to participate in virtual or distance learning? Could the student return to school once the family felt it was safer for the family? Finally, would this be an option for all families that are not vulnerable but not comfortable returning to school? Thank you for your time." This one is from Catherine Newman. "Dear members of the Warwick School Committee. My name is Catherine Newman, and I would first like to thank you for the work you continue to do on behalf of our school community. I am not only a lifetime Warwick resident, but I have also had the pleasure of teaching in the district for 29 years. As we continue to look to the reopening of our schools, I have a few comments and questions for the committee to consider. At the July 14th meeting this week, a teacher submitted to public comment many questions, many having to do with reopening concerns, not only for the students but also for the teachers. Do you plan on addressing these questions and submitting answers and writing to the Warwick community, parents, and teachers? I had the opportunity to work on the Financial Subcommittee for Reopening, and would like to publicly thank Mr. Ferrucci, Mr. Baxter, and Ms. Morby for the work they did to present a budget tonight. I know the other two teachers on the committee, and I were happy to provide input, but it was their work over the weekend and in the evenings that allowed you to have such a detailed report, and I totally support their presentation. With respect to the budget, as I review it once again, I realize there may be some items which have not been addressed because one can only anticipate just many things. I ask that you keep in mind the possibility that this budget may not fully address everything needed to open safely. I hope it does, but it may be that as the process begins, the realization that more is needed may arise, thus increasing said budget. If we open the schools, whether in full or hybrid form, there will be some parents who do not feel comfortable sending their children back to school in person. This, of course, brings to the forefront the issue of how and when do these students get their instruction. During our unexpected shutdown in March, one of the biggest problems was to get students to attend Google meets with their teachers and receive appropriate instruction. My question is, are you going to have these students attend classroom instruction via Google meets when the class is actually in session in the building? In other words, would students be required to be on a Google meet, which the teacher has up and running while instruction is being given to the students in the building? This would allow students to be in the class during instruction but not physically in the room. If not, what is your plan to address this? Thank you for your attention and continue to be safe. I hope we will all be." This is from Jamie Boulier. "Good evening. As a parent in Warwick School District, I feel we should be given the choice to distant learn. If parents are willing and able to do so, I feel it opens up spots in schools that may be overcrowded for those who cannot distant learn from home. I feel as a parent with four children in the district, three of those kids in elementary, distant learning for us was a huge success. Teachers stepped up and worked hard for many months, and I actually commended the school district and many people for all the effort. I will also state, one of my children has NAEP and has also been successful. I know this is not the case for everyone, so I'm asking the parents have a choice." And lastly, this is from Darlene Neco, President of the Warwick Teachers Union. "Dear members of the Warwick School Committee. As you know, the Warwick Public Schools will be submitting in schools reopening plan to the Rhode Island Department of Education. This plan must include provisions for the delivery of instruction to students in a full-in-person model through a full-distance learning model or through a hybrid or virtual in-person learning, which would involve only a portion of students entering the school buildings at one time. During the district's development of its reopening plan, I have served on a number of committees and subcommittees. I think about nine of them. And on these committees and the others, there have been administrators, teachers, support professionals, teaching assistants, custodians, clerical staff, middle managers, community members, city employees, school committee members, and other elected officials, and parents who have worked together to attempt to do the impossible, which is to plan to reopen schools during a pandemic that shows no signs of abating or being wrangled under control. I am providing this public comment to you tonight because I want you to know about the effort and thought that many individuals put into this plan and about the genuine concerns for everyone's health and safety that many, including the teachers and support professionals I represent, have if we return in any way to the school buildings. In order to develop its reopening plan for the Rhode Island Department of Education, the district created a reopening committee or task force and the following subcommittees: Elementary, Secondary, Preschool, Communications, Facilities, Human Resources, Technology, Social Emotional Supports, Health and Safety, Special Education, Finance, Transportation, Food Services, Teaching and Learning, which has both elementary and secondary subcommittees of its own. Everyone on these committees has spent hours and hours in a few short weeks to create the best possible plan in an impossible situation. However, the fact remains that COVID-19, not RIDE, or the Warwick Public Schools, or the government will determine the way school will look in the fall, and parents, teachers, and everyone else are right to be worried, anxious, and fearful to reopen school buildings and put children in them. Therefore, the district has to have a virtual learning plan for everyone, but especially for those students and teachers who, for whatever reason, will not be able to return to the classroom even under a partial in-person hybrid plan. I also want to let you know that Dr. Thornton and I have been involved with the Consortium of Superintendents and Teachers Union Presidents from other districts that have joined together to present a united message to RIDE. The other districts are Coventry, West Warwick, Cranston, Johnston, Lincoln, Pawtucket, Wensocket, and North Providence. The union presidents are all members of the Rhode Island Federation of Teachers and Health Professionals, so they are union leaders with whom I already work on a regular basis. RIF THP President Frank Flynn has also attended the meetings of this consortium. I can let you know that the questions and concerns that the Warwick teachers have are not unique to Warwick. My union counterparts in these other districts and the superintendents all share the same frustration with RIDE and the guidance that districts have to follow to attempt to reopen schools with the fact that RIDE has even tasked us to do so in a period of uncertainty about a virus that experts do not yet understand. As one of the union presidents noted, RIDE is expecting us to solve a pandemic. Although the plans may look a little bit different at the building level, these districts will all be presenting the same cover letter and planned frameworks to RIDE. A key sentence in the document that Dr. Thornton and I signed on Monday is, 'We will make the decisions in the best interest of our students and our communities.'" The superintendents and union presidents concur that the health and safety of the students and all the adults in the buildings are the primary concerns, and I know that the Warwick Public Schools has every intention to enact that plan that will be in the best interest of the students. As school committee members, you have very difficult budgetary decisions to make. Each of the subcommittees submitted budget requests to include additional cleaning and disinfecting supplies, personal protection equipment, furniture, materials such as plexiglass, and additional personnel such as custodians, building substitute, substitute teachers, substitute teaching assistants, and others. One of the greatest obstacles for all districts is the transportation situation. There aren't enough buses or bus drivers in the state to meet the regulatory conditions to safely transport students to school. On behalf of all the teachers whom I represent and the students that I teach, I have to remind you of something that I know all five of you already know, which is that we cannot reopen these schools if doing so is going to imperil anyone's health. One has to be alive in order to either teach or learn. The teachers and others who served on these committees have created a district reopening plan that prioritizes everyone's safety in conjunction with the delivery of a high-quality education that we Warwick teachers have always provided our students. In the spring, Warwick teachers rose and met the challenge of providing virtual instruction to our students. If we cannot safely enter the buildings in the fall, we will do so again."
Thank you, Ms. Bonang.
Thank you.
Thank you to all those who wrote to us with their concerns. I think many of those concerns will be discussed this evening, and if they aren't, please feel free to call the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, or any member of the school committee that you would like to speak with. Thank you. At this time, we will move to Discussion, Action, Contract Award, District Legal Services Renewal. Dr. Thornton, please.
Madam Chair, in your packets, you have a memo regarding legal services for this year we're in, this school year. This is based on historical spending in the district, so given that, I would ask you approve this for this coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll move approval for the purpose of discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Chair, I think that Mr. Hennessy's firm has served us well. I'm pleased with their work, and I see no reason why we wouldn't retain them.
I agree with you, Mr. Testa. They have served us very well and provide a very comprehensive services and even go out so far when needed to find other attorneys and resources for us as needed. Therefore, I'll take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I just hear a horn?
That was probably my phone buzzing.
It was Dave cheering for Andrew because he's pretty neato.
The big air horns that you use at the baseball game.
New business. Number one, I mean, number two, Discussion, Action, Contract Award, Human Resources, Substitute Management System Annual Renewal. Mrs. Ruggieri.
Yes, you may remember last year, Human Resources came before you, and we asked for a six-month contract with this vendor. During the year, we did try and demo a few other programs to see if they would better suit our needs. Nothing came in as low as this one did, or they weren't offering us the same services as far as where we could get our, you know, our modules to communicate with payroll and everything. So, in the end, we realized that this was the best system for us, and we're asking for a year contract.
You just trailed off, so you said you're asking for a one-year contract?
For a one-year contract with the vendor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion, any questions on this? For the director or anyone else? Will they be able to offer you more services at this time?
Any additional services would incur extra costs, so this time it would just be maintaining what we currently have.
But you're happy with what they're doing right now?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote passes 5-0. Thank you. Discussion, action. Contract Award, District Wireless Communications Annual Renewal. Mr. Ferrucci and Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have before you the annual bill for wireless services for all the cellphones that we've got issued throughout the district. Last year, we had considerably less, but as the year went on, we came before you with requests because of the emergency response use of our cellphones throughout the district. So, we've included all of those authorizations. Historically, there's no new authorizations going forward for this year, and attached to the request is a roster of the positions that actually have a cellphone. So, myself on the superintendent behalf of the answer any questions, but I do realize that this is a practical tool during any emergency response that may have to take place during the district, you know, throughout the district, so we seek careful.
Thank you. Superintendent, did you want to add anything?
Just Madam Chair, that I know sometimes folks may think walkie-talkies alone are good enough for communication. I would say, in my experience, you need a walkie and a cellphone because in terms of a crisis situation, one mode of communication may not get it done. For example, if you're on Toldo Get on the Hill, it's very difficult to get a walkie to go from one area to the next. Cellphones really are a matter of safety and security.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
Just out of curiosity, did you, like, go to other vendors? Like, this one's Verizon. Have you, did you check out AT&amp;T? Would it just be T-Mobile now? Because there's no more Sprint, but was anyone else consulted?
I'd have to defer that to Ms. Machado, which I believe is here this evening.
Yeah, so before Mr. Alexander left the district, I know that he was talking to T-Mobile about their pricing. We do go with Verizon because they are on the RMPA and also the MHC, which is two consortiums that we follow, but I'm actually looking forward to the new director coming on board so we can kind of either put this out to bid or get more vendors involved to see what prices they can bring us.
All right. Anyone else have any questions?
I have one, just one for Ms. Machado, actually.
Mr. Testa.
Thank you. Ms. Machado, I know you said Verizon was a member of the RMPA and the other consortium. Do you know if the other ones are as well?
I don't know, but I could look into that.
Okay, I'm just curious. I would assume that if one of the majors like Verizon is, I would bet the other ones would want to be there too, just from a strictly business point of view. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Testa.
Actually, I have a follow-up now. So, if you're looking forward for Dr. Taylor, when he comes on to maybe put this one out to bid, would it make sense to table this one?
I would not recommend that at this time. There are folks that haven't had the wireless cellphones that really need them to do their job, especially with what's ahead of us, so I think to table this would not be in the best for our employees.
And if I may interject as well, Madam Chair, I'm concerned about the prioritization of $55 a month service versus the possibility of $50 or $45 a month. Our opening of schools, our commitment to whether we're going to have a managed contract or an assistant operations person come on board, the other priorities that we have in front of us with the directive tech, I really didn't want to tie up the cellphone issue. I think probably give us a window about six months, hit the spring, and see where we go from there, if you would not mind. I appreciate it.
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else? Okay. I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The I's have it 5-0. Thank you. Number four, Discussion, Action, Bid Award, Athletic Supplies. Good evening, Mr. Ricks. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening. Everybody else?
Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
So, what can you tell us about this?
Yeah, this is just our annual bid that we send out each year. It's basic for basic athletic equipment and supplies, basketballs, you know, footballs, field hockey balls, whatever it may be. We send it out, and we had a number of vendors set a bid, and this was the vendor that had the lowest bid prices on the majority of the items, so just trying to be cost-effective. Should we have sports, this would be just the vendor list that we'd be able to purchase our equipment from.
Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Chair, I have one question. Our cover sheet says the company being awarded is BSN Sports, but the backing, the supporting paperwork says that we recommend Grogan Marciano. So, is that just a typo? It must be.
If I may say, Grogan Marciano was the low bid. I'm not sure where the beginning, the first part came from.
So, in that case, can we just? What, we amend this? Just to say, the award is to Grogan Marciano? Or do we approve it, noting the change from BSN to Grogan Marciano?
I would recommend just approving it and name the vendor that you're approving because if you look at the memo to Mr. Ferrucci from Ms. Machado, that does accurately state Grogan, so I would just, for clarity's sake, make sure that you just name the actual vendor.
Yeah, I only see it saying to Grogan as well. I also have a question, Madam Chair. I have two questions. One was, any of the equipment here, well, not here, but was any covered by the previous purchases that we made in the prior budget? Because I know that we tried to load it off into the previous budget. Was anything that was here kind of covered there?
Yes, it was. We were able to purchase a few of the items in preparation for this year, so we'd be able to take some of the, you know, some of the balance off of what athletics requested.
Okay, and then the other thing is, this is just like where we would be purchasing items if we have sports, correct? Like, if, okay, cool. You know where I was going with that question.
No, exactly, no, but I mean, yes. So, if we have sports and it's full go, then that's where we'll order our equipment from because we get the lowest prices.
Cool.
Madam Chair, if I may make a comment?
Please, Mr. Ricks.
Thank you. I just want to apologize for the typo on the cover memo. I picked up Ms. Machado's first reference as to who bid, so that was my error, and I concur with that it's Grogan Marciano. And then to just piggyback on Mr. Adams' question, we only purchase what we need. We're not obligated to the vendor for the numbers that are put into the bid. They know that. It's based on actual need, so even if we run the sport and we don't need 10 dozen baseballs and we only need six, we'll only buy the six. And if it doesn't run at all, then we won't purchase anything, so there's no obligation.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Are there any other questions? Therefore, I'll call the question. Bid Award, Athletic Supplies from Grogan Marciano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was there a motion?
Yeah. The chair motioned, and I seconded it. Cool.
Motion passes 5-0. Number five, Discussion, Action, Bid Award, Athletic Medical Supplies. Mr. Ricks.
Yes, I believe this was also part, Ms. Machado and Mr. Ferrucci, we have an answer, also part of what the nurses and health were part of the bid, but we did have one bid, and based on that, we accepted this vendor.
And if I might follow up on Mr. Ricks' comment, we do wait for our field reps, our budget managers, and the users of the products to report back to us if they, in fact, concur with the bidder that they want to recommend. Mr. Ricks did say that he wants to move forward with this group. We have not received affirmation from the medical, so this evening, we're asking just for approval for the athletic portion of the medical bid, and we'll be back to you with a recommendation once we receive that from the nurses in their department, just so you understand the split. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Is there any questions? Mr. Ricks, I have one question, and it is, do we have a surplus of medical supplies in some areas because we had to close last year due to COVID?
I wouldn't say it's a surplus. We do have some supplies from last year, certainly enough to get the year started if we wanted, but we would need additional supplies as the year went on.
Okay. Thank you for that. At this time, I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The I's have it 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
In accordance with school committee policy, administration will be presenting those expenses ranging from $1,000 to $4,999 as a consent agenda item. If a school committee member wishes to address any individual item noted, they may do so by referencing the index number of a particular document for an individual item to be removed from the consent agenda and addressed separate and individually from the agenda. Item six, Discussion, Action, Contract Awards, 1 through 4, Consent As Presented. 1 through 4 include food service equipment, facility storage, Greenwood Elementary Supplies, and Ingenuity. Mr. Ferrucci? Anything?
Nothing further to add. The supporting documents are attached to the consent agenda.
Yes, they are. Thank you. Are there any committee members who wish to comment and have anything removed from the consent agenda and taken up separately?
No, Madam Chair, I have one question for Mr. Oliver for the AAA mobile warehousing. Those are storage containers that you're at buildings and grounds, right?
No, they are spread out across the district. We do have a bunch of them at my facilities, but there are also some other ones that Mr. Ricks has on facilities for his storage of his athletic equipment and things of that nature.
Okay, no, I get you. What threw me is the paperwork. They just list straight for Avenue's the address. That's probably just for billing purposes.
These are just for building purposes, the ones we have right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Anyone else? I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The I's have it 5-0. Number seven. Discussion update. Reopening of schools. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, good evening. Ms. Danbrook and I will be showing you four or five slides, some remarks, and then we're certainly happy to answer your questions on this very important topic of reopening schools. Ms. Danbrook, if you could go ahead and share your screen to start.
Please proceed.
But while that's loading, I can certainly just start, start from here. So as you all know, this is something historic in our country in terms of everyday life and certainly education. We've been given the task at the district level to provide plans to the state by tomorrow, the 17th. We were given guidelines from the state on how to accomplish this. And within those guidelines, the state is looking for us to submit several plans. As you'll see in the slides in one minute. Essentially, having gone through the graduation situation where we had many different versions of graduation, there was some, I think, concern at the district level to not have that occur again. To that end, as Ms. Netco did mention, we did meet on several occasions with the AFT districts to really have a thoughtful, deep conversation about what is a safe reopening plan for faculty, staff and students. How are we doing, Ms. Danbrook?
I'm having trouble.
Okay, we'll just keep going. That's okay.
It came up on my, it came up on my screen that it was presenting, but I don't know why you can't see it.
That's okay. So essentially, as you've probably heard in the news cycle, there are different versions of what we have to submit, whether it's a full virtual plan, a partial plan, a limited plan, or a full, everyone in school plan. I can tell you, we were unanimous in our AFT discussions. Unit president, superintendents were unanimous in our belief that we believe a partial reopening is the safe plan or safe course of action. We felt so strongly about it that as you will hear tonight and tomorrow, the, these AFT districts are submitting a plan that calls for a partial reopening. We are not submitting a plan for a full reopening. The guidance from the state really was stressing the concept of elementary school, all students in school every day. To us, looking at the guidance and looking at the parameters such as three to six feet between students, we didn't feel that was a safe proposition to, you know, to undertake here in Warwick or any, any district. So that's why we are looking at the partial. We are essentially, we would have 50% of the students in school every other day. So in this plan, as you know from the state calendar, many Mondays are PD days and/or holidays. So in this plan, Monday would be either a PD or a cleaning day, if you will, for the schools and students would be engaged virtually. On the Tuesday, Thursday or Wednesday, Friday, you would see half the students in. So if a student, let's say, had a name of, you know, ending in F, he may go on that Tuesday, Thursday, and maybe his classmate with a name ending in P would go on the Wednesday, Friday. We also have in our plan, the proposition that we would not split families up. So if families were, there we go, if families were, you know, on one day, we'd keep them all together. We also know from the discussions and emails and all the comments tonight, that many have concerns about having students go back to school, be it, you know, situations at home, unmedically compromised individuals, or just real concerned about having their students go back. So given that, okay, I think I see the plan coming up, Ms. Danbrook?
I apologize.
That's okay. So, that's okay. So I mentioned this already, and Ms. Netco mentioned this, these are the districts, I'm not going to read them to you, but you, you see them there, those are the districts in the AFT where all, essentially, we all signed one document, one cover page, and we're all submitting, you know, that first part of the plan, which is identical. I would tell you, inside the plan, there are nuances from West Warwick to Cranston to Warwick in terms of maybe how a certain building handles a certain situation, but the tenants are the same, 50% for every other day, Monday being a virtual day. And we also believe, as I was just going to say, that we do want to engage our families and students virtually if that's what they need. I know there was some discussion around the state over the comfort level of that occurring, but Ms. Netco and I have had many discussions, we firmly believe that, you know, we want to engage our students every day, whether they're in person, in front of us, or, or virtually. So I would tell you, you know, virtual, virtual engagement can take many forms, from a traditional lecture, which you may see on occasion, to more, you know, guided, you know, planned full type of, of virtual activities. So, Ms. Danbrook, can you take us through this next slide?
Sure. So the Rhode Island Department of Ed had given us guidance that they wanted our plan to follow these four sections listed below. So health and safety, as Dr. Thornton and Darlene mentioned, that was thought about in every scenario in our plan. That was number one. Also, instruction, how will instruction, what would it look like if it's distance learning? If it's a hybrid model where it's two days in school, two days at home? We looked at social emotional support. We know that we need to support our staff, our students and our families. So we have plans in place for all those supports. And also reopening operations. So what are our daily operations going to look like under the COVID-19 situation?
And if I could add on operations, one thing to, to consider and be mindful of, historically in schools, if you have absenteeism of faculty, you use certainly substitute teachers, covers, and/or you would on occasion maybe take a class with, you know, an absent faculty member and disperse them amongst other classrooms. In the COVID situation, we don't have the ability to separate classrooms and spread them out. That would be cross pollinating, if you will, the classrooms. If these classrooms are, you know, stable pods, as they call them, we can't do that. So what that means is this. Some of our discussions in surveys, we're bracing for the potential of having 20% of our faculty absence on a given day. That could happen. If that happens, we'll have to be very nimble and flexible on a daily basis and have almost a tote board to ascertain if we can open each school on that given day. And that call could come early in the morning as we get reports of, you know, who's, who's not coming in that day. So in terms of opening operations, that's going to be very nimble in terms of how we have to act and cover each day. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, those are the different kinds of plans, whether it's a full distance learning, a limited in-person learning, a partial or a full. I would say, I want to commend the committee. I know a meeting ago, you approved various online tools. You know, I would tell you, those will serve us well because whether you're full distance learning or partial distance learning, distance learning is going to be the backbone of, of schools. Until such time, I believe that we do have a vaccine, so it's really important that we, you know, keep our many arrows in the quiver, if you will, in terms of tools for distance learning. So as I mentioned earlier, the AFT group is committed to a, a partial in-person where we have 50%. That's what we believe is safe and throughout our discussions, health and safety of all was our driving consideration. I know that may cause some challenges where other districts may go full and they may have faculty or staff that live or work in another town. And I think we all recognize that, but that's, I think, some of the frustration you may be hearing around the state as to why the state didn't put out one plan, but instead now we have, have different nuances of this. Next slide.
Okay, so as we know, masks do help prevent the spread of the coronavirus. So we are asking that all staff and students wear masks and we will be providing the masks to students and staff, or they can bring one from home. If a student for some reason cannot wear a mask, then we respect that. On social distancing, so as Dr. Thornton was talking about before, the stable group setting, so all of our plans for elementary and middle school incorporate stable group settings. So what that means is the students stay in their classroom with their classmates for the day. And teachers, instead of the students going to the teachers, the teachers will be going to the classroom. So for elementary school, the students usually go to the health room to receive their health lesson. Now the health teacher will come to the room. So the students stay in the room, they eat breakfast in the room, they will eat lunch in the room. And also in middle school, we have the teams and instead of going to, you know, the science, your science team teacher, all the teachers on the teams will go to the classrooms. At the high school, oh, go ahead, Dr. Thornton, did you want to say?
No, go ahead.
So at the high school, that's not possible because, you know, students in a geometry class, the next class, they might be taking different subjects. So obviously, that's not possible. So we're asking that, that they wear masks and social distancing, especially when they're moving through the hallways. And we've developed plans for general spacing and movement for arrival and departure times. So there might be staggered arrival and departure times so that all the children are not coming at the same time and all the children aren't leaving at the same time. The communications committee is committed to put signs throughout the building to remind staff and students of all the CDC guidelines for masks, for hand washing and for social distancing. So instruction, so as Dr. Thornton previously mentioned, we're going with the hybrid model. We felt that was the only model that would help us create an environment where appropriate social distancing is possible. So students will be split into two instructional groups and considerations have been made for siblings from a family to attend the school on the same day to make it easy for the family. So you have 50% of the students will meet in person in the school on, this is just an example, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the other group will meet in person on Wednesdays and Fridays. On the days that the children do not meet in person, these will be review and remediation days to practice and reinforce skills. They also may watch the lessons through Zoom and be part of the instruction and that's going on and learning going on in the classroom. So Mondays will be a distance learning day for all students. Many PD days the state has designated are on Mondays. We also thought it would be a good distance learning day so the teachers can attend that professional development, do some distance learning, but also give us a chance to do some in-depth cleaning throughout the schools.
In, in terms of next steps, next meeting, certainly this is just an overview as our plan gets submitted tomorrow. We will post our actual plan once it is submitted to the state, but we do, I should also add, as you may have heard, these plans aren't being approved by RIDE. We're getting feedback. So the, really is a local decision. So while we have guidance, it is a local decision of how this, how this plays out. But we are looking to start a series of Zoom discussions and just, you know, hearing sessions. We're looking next week to talk to our admin staff via Zoom. We're going to coordinate with both unions to have Zooms where folks can call in with their questions and concerns. And then as we get to the end of the month where we actually post our, our final thinking on this plan, we're going to have a Zoom for each building, the building level with ourselves, the principals, where folks can, can certainly call in. I would tell you, the plans you make in mid-July can look different in September, given this virus. So this is the best thinking, you know, going in tomorrow. We're not, you know, sure what a month and a half holds for us in terms of this pandemic, but we do believe we want to keep people informed routinely and that'll start picking up speed as of now. So at that point, I know that was just a brief overview. The takeaways I want you to have and the folks listening in, I want you to have is, it's a 50% hybrid model and Warwick is going to engage everyone virtually, both, you know, while we're in school and, and not in the classroom. So those are the, the big takeaways and I'm happy to answer all questions the committee has, or Ms. Danbrook as well.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I, I have a question. So that, given our plan, RIDE will not approve it, so they won't say, well, we don't like your plan, so you have to open up 100%.
I think right now, we have regular communications with RIDE through the superintendent's groups via Zoom. I can tell you, the, the RIDE guidance does call for elementary every day. I would just tell you, the AFT group felt very strongly that would not be a, a safe situation, so we're not submitting that plan.
Thank you. I think that I speak for the majority, if not all, committee members, and they can certainly speak to this themselves, that we do not feel or believe that we should open up 100%. I would feel absolutely awful if anybody got sick and ended up dying or anything like that. I don't think it's worth the risk and I think that it would be irresponsible for RIDE to try and force anyone into that. I have one question about masks. If a child or a teacher can't wear a mask, will they be given face shields?
The guidance we're getting so far is, we believe, a mask and a face shield, given certain kinds of occupations, say a speech pathologist, would be beneficial. A face shield alone, as I'm, I could be wrong, correct me, would not be the optimal protection. You would want a mask and a shield. A shield alone, we'll have to check, and it's certainly better.
You're absolutely right, but what I'm speaking to is, Ms. Danbrook said if a child can't wear a mask, he or she won't be forced to, but, I mean, a face shield helps a little bit, so would they be given, you know, something to try and help protect?
Yeah.
And in this case, perhaps a face shield.
I'll have to check into that as far as the shield supply. I would tell you, if you're wondering why a district, you know, can't simply enforce a mask rule, I would tell you, the state has told us, we, districts cannot discipline students for not wearing a mask. So that is why, in case you're wondering, we cannot compel folks to wear masks.
And certainly some people have pulmonary or other medical issues that would not be in the best medical interest of the student or.
And also, many students have some sensory issues that would cause them not to be able to wear the mask.
Is there any, are there any other committee members who would like to speak? Mr. Adams?
Um, I mean, I, I have a question, I have a statement. Though, those, those students or teachers that are having, or that are at risk, or they are, they live with someone that is at risk in comparison to those people who cannot wear masks, are they going to be, I guess, like just placed in different classes from each other?
So if, are you asking if a, if a teacher who's compromised?
If, if like, if a teacher or student is either compromised or lives with someone who is compromised, are they going to, are they going to be placed, or is there measures? are they going to, are they going to be placed or is there measures to prevent those kids or those people from being grouped together?
Um, I think I would say if someone has a valid concern about being compromised, certainly something we have to look at, we would provide a virtual experience for for that student. If a teacher, for example, had that situation, we may be able to be creative and nimble. And if we had a teacher who had that situation, we could have them actually teach virtually, be like, let's say, a third grade virtual teacher for for students in district that needed it. So we want to really work with people in the situations they have. If you're a student, you could engage virtually. And for a teacher, maybe we can also work with them and have them be a virtual teacher.
Right. And my comment, I mean, I I hate putting any at-risk anything. Because, I mean, like, I live with someone who's immunocompromised and, like, it's terrifying to possibly bring that home to him. So I understand everyone who feels the same way and I absolutely hate the thought of putting people in danger. That's all I have to say on it.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Adams, Mr. Testa, please go ahead. I dropped my screen.
With respect to masks, I understand we can't force people to wear masks. But I think it's in everyone's best interest to have as many people as possible wearing masks all day in school. I understand there could be IEPs, the century, I get that. I have to believe that we're talking a relatively small percentage of our student population in our in our adult population. I know that that's a huge issue. There was even an op-ed written today in the Journal from a teacher in Barrington. And as a teacher, I get it. I'd be concerned. I'm wearing a mask and the 17, 18, 22 kids in front of me don't have to wear one. So I'd hope this, a lot of this comes down to parents too, to to, you know, tell your son or your daughter, wear your mask. The, with respect to staffs, staff absences and as Dr. Thornton said, we have to be nimble. We may not know until on any given day if if there's not enough staff at a particular school. You know, hopefully, that, in a perfect world, that would never happen. And hopefully, if it does happen, it's limited because that that puts a tremendous burden on parents too, especially at a 6:30 in the morning phone call. With respect to the staggered arrival and departure times, my only concern would be, from a parental point of view, if we're going to disrupt the day, I think we should try to disrupt one part of it. So whether the staggered, if I'm a parent, I've got to get my kids to school because they don't take a bus or whatever the reason is. If I have kids at different levels, I think it's, as a parent, I prefer to be interrupted in the morning or if I would normally drop my child off at 8:25 and I have to drop him or her off at 8 o'clock, okay, that's fine. As opposed to where I know my child got out of school at 3 and my second child got out at, or all of them got out at 3. And it's conceivable I could have two or three kids who used to get out at the same time now not get out at the same time. So whatever arrangements I would make to get my kids picked up from school, I've got to change that too. So I just, let's just keep parents in mind when it comes to that. If it means building coverage and all the expenses associated with that, so be it. But, I mean, we're disrupting parents as it is with the 50% and I understand it. But we have to try to not disrupt both halves of their of their child's school day. Last question.
We have taken that into consideration. So for instance, in elementary school, if we decide to have K2 students arrive 20 minutes before the opening of school and grade three through five 20 minutes after, if there are a family that has a first grader and a fifth grader, they can both arrive at the same time. But we just don't want the congestion. I think a lot more parents would be driving their students to school, their children to school, and we just didn't want all the congestion of students and the parents at one time and same with the parks. And we'll have coverage for those students. And as far as the question on the masks, I just want parents to know that there will be mask breaks during the day. So it's not that they're going to come in right in the morning and wear the mask until they leave. So we will be incorporating mask breaks, mostly by taking the students outside.
Thank you. And I get it. I mean, I had three kids and it doesn't matter if they're six or 16. Sometimes you ask them to do something and they don't do it. So. As far as instruction goes, when you mentioned on the 50%, like Monday, half the kids going one day and then the next day, is that strictly a, is the plan for that to be strictly a, like a review day? Or will there be instruction on that day as well? That's what I'm just not clear on.
No, what we're saying is there would be instruction and the student would just access it a different way. You may access it in person on Tuesday. You would access that instruction virtually on the Wednesday.
Okay, so the so the teacher would, the teacher is there on Tuesday and there on Wednesday teaching and I'm the student. So I know at 10 o'clock, I have to be at Mrs. Smith's class. So I'm in front of my Chromebook at 10 o'clock and I'm participating with everybody else.
I would say my experience in talking to Ms. Neko and other teachers and admin, one size doesn't fit all. That may be one example, Dave, where it is a, you know, 9:05, you're going to see that class. Or maybe the student is going to access that material at 2 o'clock that day. So I don't think one size fits all, but they will access it every day.
Okay. And I understand it. It's not easy. And the only thing I would I would just say in this whole thing, I think that the way a plan looks on August 31st may not be how it looks on September 8th. And it may not be how it looks on October 1st. I think you recognize we're going to have to be nimble. We'll have to make changes. What's critical in this entire endeavor is the communication. The communication at the building level between building administrators, teachers, custodial staff, support staff. It has to be, everybody's an equal partner in this thing. This is the great unknown for all of us. And when it's unknown, there's anxiety, there's fear, and I get that too. And we all have to be hypersensitive to everyone else. And it's just, as a parent, I want to know what's going on in my school periodically. I think the district needs to know what's going on in the periodic updates. It's that everybody's an equal partner in this and we are going to make changes. We're going to realize, you know what, maybe this doesn't work. Maybe, you know, periodically, we sit down and say, okay, what's working, what's not working, what has what has potential? So I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I know you guys all know this. But it's critical that we reassure parents that this is all going on at the same time. That's all. Thank you.
I'd like to speak.
Please, Ms. Cobden.
I agree with all my colleagues' words, questions, concerns. I do personally don't like the fact that kids are expected to wear masks. I'm personally, on a personal level, do not think we should be opening schools right now as much as our children need it. I think it's too soon. But if we're going to partially reopen, I just have a feeling, and it's Mr. Testa brought it up, that we need the parents' cooperation on this. I already see and I have heard and I have been told and I have gotten emails that my kid will not wear a mask for six hours a day in school. And I understand their take on it. But they have to understand that we have other people in that room that has to be in the room with your child. So I just want to put out there that I know, I guess we can't enforce it, but we really need the community's help, especially the parents telling their children that they need to wear their masks. We have a lot of other people at stake. And if your child is just playing, you don't want your kid to have to wear it, that's not really a good reason not to. If your kid has a medical problem, I completely get it. But there are people that, like Mr. Adams said, that live with compromised people or are compromised. And we have to be very careful with this. And I really have major concerns for our our teachers and staffs with students not wearing masks. Everything else, I basically feel Mr. Testa and Mr. Adams and everybody else has already mentioned. I think we all have the same concerns and feelings on a lot of this. I just am very concerned of the fact that with using the word expected to use a mask, we need to, people need to understand that that means wear a mask. And that's all about, I have to say about that. And I just, I just hope that the community pitches in on this. And I also think the community, I had a lot of people reach out to me about how do my kid get to school? I have to work and all this other things. We're a community. And what I see in Warwick, out of Warwick, from being back in Warwick for years now, people do care. We have a solid community and people need to reach out to thy neighbors and talk to other other parents. Some are newer to the area. The kids might not be very social or have a lot of friends. There are Facebook pages and with PTA and school sites. Throw up a message and say, hey, I can possibly pick the kid up in the afternoon, is anybody available in the morning? Or try to find somebody that you can coordinate with. It's going to take all of us to do this, as Mr. Testa was saying, and that includes the whole community. And I'm nervous and, you know, like we've all said, things could change tomorrow. So we have to live in a day. And I guess in the day right now means we're going to partially open. But please, the community is all there and ready to help each other. And I think people need to just lend a helping hand, but people need to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobden.
Madam Chair?
Certainly, Mr. Cornell.
Yeah, just, I would like to thank all the administration teachers and community members who were involved with making this plan of how for starting school. Like, I know it's not easy and, yeah, and I'm disappointed that RIDE is not taking a lead on this and pretty much saying, school district, just figure it out on your own. I think that's wrong and they're really dropping ball. But but the people working in these subcommittees, you're doing a great job and just thank you for all you do. Because this is, it's uncharted territory. So like, I just wanted to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. I'm sure that is appreciated. I have one last question, or whomever feels like answering it. If our students' children don't wear masks, will they be allowed to be in the classroom? Or will we assign them to a virtual learning situation in order to protect their peers and teachers? How will we handle that?
Based on the conversation guidance, we cannot deny student the the education. We could certainly talk to students, certainly talk with the parents. But as I understand the the thinking, we can deny the student opportunity to be in school.
So be that as may, how do we protect our teachers and our other students in the case of a situation where a child can't or won't wear a mask?
Yeah, once again, I would say we have to work with the parents and the families to have everyone pulled together. But there's no mechanism, as I understand it, to police or mandate a mask-wearing during the day.
I don't know how other people feel about this, but that, it's for Jerry, is going to be potentially a very big obstacle for teachers and families of children to wear a mask and try to keep people safe. Now, I know there are kids that have medical issues and stuff. I think we have to try and do something to give some protection for everyone. But I just want to know how we're going to keep our teachers and our fellow students, their fellow students, safe. Because we could end up, I don't want to see anybody die. I don't want to see a teacher die. I don't want to see students die. I don't want to see an outbreak in Warwick. I don't, I couldn't live with myself if that happened. I mean, this is a very, very serious, serious issue, COVID. And the more we learn about it, the more scary it becomes. And it is no longer just a pulmonary disorder. So I really, I don't know what we're going to do, but I think we really need to look at that. Does the right of one person be the rights of all? Or do we accommodate somebody who can't wear a mask or who can't wear some sort of protection in a more virtual? You know, this country is waxed and waned and, you know, back, we had typhoid fever and things like that. We did things differently. Was it smarter, perhaps? At least we thought about the many of them.
Madam Chair, if I can, if I can piggyback on what you just said.
Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Ms. Danbrook, if I remember, in the slides, aren't there, at the secondary level at least, aren't there periods during the day where the students have to wear a mask? Like if they're in, if they're in the, right? So there are periods during the day where they're required to wear a mask, right?
When they're in common areas, like the hallways, passing in the hallways and things like that.
So to me, what it, it, it's interesting how a classroom wouldn't be considered a common area because it still is. So, you know, and I agree with, I agree with the chair. I know maybe the state says you can't force a student to wear a mask. So that's why I mentioned it's down to the parents. And we can all take this stand on, you know, hang our live free or die flag if we want. But for me, unless there's a doctor's note or in this written into the IEP, obviously, the expectation is, if you don't have those two criteria, then you wear a mask. So, and I don't know, short of forcing, and we can't force them. But I think that has to be a message that we continually just pound away at parents and the students too. And I can envision, I was a parent of teenage teenagers once, and I can envision, you know, someone always, there's always a smarmy person in the crowd, right? So, but we have to be able to deal with that. And if a student is just being contrary and say, I'm not wearing a mask because I don't have to and you can't force me, I think, I think we've got a problem. And I don't know what the answer is. But that would be a very serious problem because that, because the student, and God forbid, that student's asymptomatic. So.
This is a matter of, to cut in, it's a matter of life and death. It's got that potential.
Yeah. I just, I mean, I understand that, you know, if we said we're going to require everybody to wear a mask, I mean, I'm sure there's somebody somewhere that would say, hey, you can't do that. And then, I don't know, Mr. Hennius, you would know better than I. I mean, would someone run off to court or threaten to run off to court? But I think maybe when we open up, we see how this mask compliance goes. And we have to chart it and we have to notify parents if your student refuses to wear a mask. And this is too important. Like, this isn't, you know, this isn't a dress code where student comes in showing midriff and we warn the parent. This isn't the same thing.
And I think this goes back to, Mr. Testa, what you said about communication. Like all hands on deck, communicating the importance of wearing masks, including the nurse and the administration and the teachers. So it is about communication and reaching out to those parents and working with them.
Yeah, and I think that the starting point is, you know, we all, I think everybody agrees that the best learning takes place in person. And we're going to do our best to accommodate that. And we wouldn't want actions of students to jeopardize that. So, you know, it's hard to tell a 15-year-old sometimes.
Can I speak again, Madam Chair?
Certainly, Ms. Cobden.
I completely agree with Mr. Testa on needing a medical note. I'm 150% in agreement with that. The only thing I have to say is we can't watch things and see how they go. We either do it right from the beginning or we could have a serious problem. So I think we need to discuss possibly having to have a medical note because we can't try it out and see who is going to comply and who isn't. Because the minute we have kids in a school with no masks on and and saying no and being belligerent, we can't wait till we. Because the minute we have kids in a school with no masks on and, and saying no and being belligerent, we can't wait two weeks. That's too long. One day is too long. We don't know this virus at all, a- as we all know. And I, we have to be as cautious as possible. So I am a hundred and fifty percent in agreement of, of having a, to have a medical note for that. Thank you.
Or having it, would, would you agree a medical note, Ms. Cobb, then, or having it written in an I E P if that student has an I E P?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, uh, if, if a child has it in their I E P, then, then, okay, we understand that it's a medical problem, a medical issue. I mean, it can be social, emotional. I mean, it's a medical problem. Child has it in, in, in their I E P that this is going to affect them in whatever way, we have to understand that. But just saying my child, you know, isn't going to wear a mask doesn't fly with me. If, if, they, they need a medical note. I completely agree with that. And I think that's something that we definitely need to look at to, to have on the start of school, not, not in a few weeks to see how it's going.
Madam Chair, if I could, I can certainly explore with Mr. Hennius before next meeting in August and come back to you with us.
I, I'd be happy to do that with Dr. Thor.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, S M A?
Please.
Um, it may, we have fifteen hundred kids with I E Ps in the district and there's no provisions for masks at this time. We've never had to do this before, so it would take quite a bit of time to change everyone's I E P. We may want to consider, um, having the special education case manager make a recommendation that, you know, the student is unable to wear a mask. And I, I don't, I'm not even certain, and I can certainly follow up, um, with Mr. Hennius on this, but I'm not even certain it would go into an I E P. But I always know that the special education case managers know the students, know which ones should be held to that expectation and which ones can't. So we just may want to consider doing it that way for efficiency sake.
I think we can certainly work with, with, with Dr. Conley and Dr. Thor and come up with something that, um, that we can, um, put into effect.
I mean, we have a responsibility to protect our entire population, students and teachers and everybody else, uh, in the wise union and non-union and everybody else. We have a responsibility and it's on us if we don't, uh, provide protection for people, uh, who uh, come upon situations in their classrooms and things like that where a student just refuses to wear a mask. I, I think it's irresponsible and puts us at risk. And, uh, it's, I think it's, personally, I think it's unethical. So I think we need to make other arrangements and we'll see where that leads with our legal counsel and.
So Madam Chair, the last word I would say on this is I will give the committee the actual plan tomorrow when we submit it. And we will publicize the plan of the following week.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good job. Number eight, discussion update, transportation, presentation, potential solutions for busing students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have, uh, Ms. Kim Machado with me this evening. She is the district's non-education student manager. Um, her division consists of, uh, the school lunch program as well as our transportation, as well as purchasing. Um, after the school committee's adoption of your original budget, where the transportation contract was cut by six million dollars for the regular ed students. Um, Ms. Machado approached me about, uh, reconsidering the impact on students and, um, that she would like to come before you this evening to present you with statistics with regards to the possibility of reinstating, uh, busing into the F Y twenty-one budget. Um, there is a budget discussion later on the agenda for F Y twenty-one. I will go into detail the implications of, uh, the busing costs, as well as other adjustments that we need to make to our, to our F Y twenty-one, uh, current original adopted budget. But what I wanted to do is provide Ms. Machado an opportunity to present you folks with, uh, a host of statistics. Um, to reinstate, as we have typically run busing, um, how many buses and how that would be accomplished. Um, and then if there is cost savings for consideration, if you can't fully reinstate the six million dollars that has been cut. In addition, she would also provide us some, some statistics regarding what the potential impact is of, of complying with the ride guidelines or the, um, the guidelines associated with taking students to schools under the COVID guidelines put out by the Department of Health and the C D C. I want to just stress right now that hers are statistic-based so that you folks have the information to make, um, informed decisions later on when we talk about budgets. So I'm not going to speak too much about budget other than those statistics and what it means. And I want to thank, uh, Ms. Machado and her team, um, on running through the various scenarios. Um, I want to just also close with, time is of the essence. Um, historically, July is a busy month for transportation under normal conditions. Um, us preparing the bus schedules, us preparing the special ed bus schedules. We're typically done around the tenth of the twelfth of August, so we're prepared to publicly post what the, the, uh, busing routes will be. So every day that goes by that we don't have a real solid plan as to what we're going to do, just going to make it that much more problematic on being prepared for opening of schools and about what our plans are. So hearing the superintendent's plan presented this evening is going to be a jump-off point for her department. And what I also want to temper is that the COVID requirements are a separate discussion from the current local operating budget. The current local operating budget has been developed on if schools opened typical to prior years. So that's our baseline in which we're jumping off. Anything COVID-related, the finance subcommittee for the task force for reopening has created a budget. And so those costs will be above and beyond what the local budget is. Again, I'll go into budget discussion when we get to those agenda items, but I would like to now turn it over to Ms. Machado. Thank you, Camway.
Thanks, Tony. Uh, good evening.
Welcome. It's always good to be.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm here tonight to request the reinstatement of the cuts made to the F Y twenty-one transportation operating budget by school committee on June twenty-fourth. As you can see in the F Y twenty-one reinstate request column, the documents that were shared, transportation requires the funds in order to provide the same level of service from our previous years. Also provided are three options that could reduce these costs. These options do not factor in hazard roads. They increase each of the walking distance policies and decrease qualified ridership. Um, if anyone has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you give us an overview of each option there?
Sure. Um.
For the public.
Sure. So, um, the options beside the reinstatement of the, of the budget that was cut, are you referring to the? Okay, sure. So option one, um, would be adding point twenty-five, so a quarter mile to our current walking distance. Um, so in doing that, that would increase the elementary from point seven five to one mile. It would increase the middle school from one point seven five to two miles and increase the high school from two miles to two point twenty-five miles. Um, I can also share with the, the numbers that, of the students that no longer qualify. Okay, so if we add the quarter mile, that's five hundred and seventy-seven K through five students that will no longer qualify. In the middle school, ninety-seven students, in the high school, eighty-nine students. So in total, seven hundred and sixty-three students will no longer qualify by adding that quarter mile.
And how many buses would that save us?
So currently or from nineteen twenty, we are running with sixty-three. This is all just regular and, um, I want that to, to be known as well. Um, so if we were to add the quarter mile, increase the walking distance, hazard roads are not a factor, we would go down to twenty-nine buses.
Is there anything else that you could tell us about?
Um, it would be, uh, it, it would be difficult for the community. It is a huge cost savings. Um, I'm concerned with the hazardous roads, of course. Um, you know, the, the Warwick Police Department, they manage the crossing guards. Uh, in looking through Mr. O'Hare's files, which I found stuff from nineteen eighty-seven, so he was, uh, he kept all his files. Um, you know, they tend to not be able to fulfill all of the cross, crossing guard posts. Um, we, I, I didn't see any recommendations on our part, so I can't speak to if, if we've ever had that. I can, you know, I'm in touch with Mr. O'Hare. I can definitely reach out to him. But I feel like it's more of, um, they do the Warwick P D, they do their survey, uh, in the community and they, um, they really see whether or not a crossing guard is needed. Um, I can say for Oakland Beach, Greenwood and Scott Elementary, um, due to crossing guards being, um, taken off of the post years ago, that's why we did bus a majority of the students who were within the walking distance, but qualified because they would have to cross hazardous roads. Um, so I just thought it was important to, to put that across, um, to the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Machado.
Thank you.
Any questions from Ms. Machado?
I just want to ask one quickly before we go to the school committee. Uh, Ms. Machado, um, uh, elevating the quarter mile walk. Um, if I'm not mistaken, didn't you come before the committee, uh, previously about the movement of, um, the kindergartens up and we did a, a survey of all other districts? Are there other districts that have one mile walking limits for elementary students?
Yes, so East Providence, Providence and Smithfield, um, and North Providence, their K through five are all a mile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and what's our current elementary walking distance?
So point seven five.
Oh, Ms. Machado, how do we measure that? Do we measure that as the crow flies or do we measure that through the winding roads?
Uh, I, I would have Mr. Ferrucci actually answer that because, uh.
My, my understanding is as, as the crow flies, um, it's a circumference around, uh, the school. So it's just, it's a circle that just would be expanded out. So, yeah, it's as the crow flies.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Madam Chair, I have some.
Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Machado, thank you. Um, as I'm sitting here, I'm realizing we probably should have put this, put this slide up on the screen for everybody to see. But, um, just so I understand it, you, you made three scenarios with taking our existing walking, uh, under normal circumstances, non-COVID related.
Correct.
We had one where we took our existing walking distance and added a quarter of a mile, a half mile and one mile. And you essentially, um, costed out what it would cost us, um, to run transportation. So adding the quarter of a mile reduces the amount of buses we need quite a bit and, and saves about two million dollars. Um, now, obviously, I don't know if that's something this, this committee doesn't have to approve this tonight, but this is something that we should strongly study uh, on a go-forward basis. Um, once this COVID thing is over, um, we may, we'll have to adjust our policy. But we, we know what a nut transportation is for, for us from a budgetary perspective. And if we end up in line with virtually most other districts, um, I don't think that's a bad thing. With respect to crossing guards, we, I've been on meetings and, and the chair has as well with association of school committees. And, uh, other cities and towns are looking to, to fix or solve or change the crossing guard situation. I know it's difficult to get a crossing guard. They tend to be senior citizens, so they're an at-risk population right now. Um, the pay is practically nothing for the few hours a day you work. So, and I know the police department controls them. But, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's worth us pursuing at some point in the future, um, a collaboration with the police department where maybe we can help subsidize and increase in, in pay for those positions. If you can, if you can deploy more crossing guards across a busy road and not have to run a bus, we know what a bus costs us. So, you know, from a, from a financial, and I don't even know if it's possible, but I think it's, it's, it's at least worth, worth asking the question. So. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Testa.
Uh, Mr. Testa, if I could just from, from your point of looking, um, at our busing, we do hope and with the COVID planning, we've learned a lot of, um, things that we can bring in to how we would approach a regular school year. So an opt-out option, um, for actually both of our ridership. Obviously with, with our special ed, you know, it's, it's more specific, it's curb-to-curb. But we do tend to have those phone calls of students that are in the special ed program that prefer not to ride when they're in high school. They want to take, you know, a regular ed bus. Um, so I think introducing an opt-out, um, will help us, um, you know, eliminate seats. Um, obviously we would love to eliminate buses for, you know, for cost, but that is something that we're hoping to introduce, uh, this coming year.
Good. And the chair is also talking about opt-outs too.
Ms. Machado, I have been talking about opt-outs for many, many years, even before Mr. Testa, uh, came onto the committee. And for some reason, there is a lot of resistance to it. But I think it's a smart option and it's not permanent. Uh, if something happened and somebody needed to, um, opt back in, certainly that wouldn't be, you know, something that we wouldn't allow. But it gives us a better feel for what we need and it can save, uh, the school department and the city, uh, significant money.
Yeah, I think so.
Did, did we touch at all, um, or are we too early to touch upon what the COVID bus picture looks like? Or is that part of?
We're not there, Mr. Testa.
I'm sorry, what?
We're not, we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
Uh, is there any further discussion from members of the committee or anybody else? Mr. Ferrucci?
Yeah, just have one final comment. I want to thank again Camway for her diligence in preparing this and the analysis that's going on and her attempts to reduce costs going forward for the district. Um, but I also got to elevate the concern this evening that, um, we're going to need some kind of direction by the end of the evening with regards to busing. Um, because as it stands, our current contractor is under the impression that we are not committing to any regular ed buses going into the school year. And they've got, um, obligations at the state level of meeting whatever guidelines the state imposes on them for transporting students. And yes, they're working under the limitations of how many students they can transport. And so they are in the difficult position of if we need to obligate busing and bus drivers to state contracts and other contracts in other communities, and Warwick is not going to move forward committing to the sixty-three buses we're sitting on in inventory today, that it really does make sense that they need to be told that so that they can redeploy some of the assets and resources. Um, Warwick Public Schools was the one who solicited the bid with the requirements of bus inventories and making a commitment to those inventories. Because we were going to make a commitment to, to lease those buses and pay those drivers. So, um, we really do need some type of direction and we'll get a little further into that conversation because it is about money and it's about your budget. But I just want to put that out while we're in the transportation basket, that it's July sixteenth and within the next two weeks, they really have to in earnest start scheduling one or two scenarios and be prepared for that, um, to be ready to go by August fifteenth. So just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Thank you, everyone. Moving along, discussion action number nine, F Y twenty-twenty preliminary year-end fiscal report. Mr. Ferrucci?
Okay. Well, thank you again, Madam Chair. Um, as has been our practice for as long as I've been, uh, involved with the school district. The first meeting in July, the school department presents to the school committee preliminary year-end fiscal report. Um, I can't say enough good things about our business office working under trying times. Um, I can't say enough good things about our business office, working under trying times and all the scatteredness of staff and trying to close out their bills so that we can give you a fairly accurate preliminary year-end position of the district as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Um, normally I have a very in-depth analysis of where we are and where we're going. Um, this evening, what I'd really like to do is pick up where we left off. At the last school committee meeting on June ninth, I had presented a document that showed very preliminary year-end fiscal position because there was a lot of conversation about where we would land fiscally and how much resources may be available to be brought forward into FY twenty-one. And at that meeting on June ninth, I gave a roster of expenditure assumptions where we would be saving funds. And I noted that substitutes, because with the schools closed, we didn't need as many substitutes. I noted that event coverage, because the buildings were closed, we weren't going to need event coverage. I noted that with athletics being cut in the spring, that we were going to save some kind of stipends there and that possibly we would save other salary dollars. I also went on and noted that we didn't need contracted services for like nurses because again, the schools weren't open. Most importantly, our transportation was shut down as of March sixteenth. And so we noted what we thought we might save on that particular line. So in total, I reported four point three million dollars of savings on the major accounts that had open purchase orders at that time on the books. I also noted for the school committee that there were overages in particular areas um, that would utilize some of those resources. One in particular was our lunch aids. There was a reclass where they were misposted into the lunch program when we actually had, uh, budgeted them in, um, our regular operating budget. They were not picked up on our annual year-end projections. And so when we did that reclass, I was telling you it was going to be about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. I also explained that there was a audit of our workers comp by the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust and they were seeking payment of a hundred and ninety-three thousand based on salaries, et cetera. I also noted that the special education audit district had encumbrances in excess of a million dollars over budget and that there would be some freeing up of funds. But I was projecting about a nine hundred thousand dollar over expenditure and audit district tuitions. And lastly, because of the, um, COVID practices and the shutting down of our school lunch, a lot of the high profit items that the school lunch program relies on to balance their overall budget, we call it the à la carte items such as selling individual pizza strips and those kinds of things, um, that we were going to be faced with having to support that program at year-end about a quarter of a million dollars. So I explained at the time that we were going to have about two point seven million dollars in reduction in expenses in totality between the two pockets of savings and over expenditures. And I also said at the time that that meant, that would be achieved if our revenue paid in as budgeted. And of course, we then received communication from the Rhode Island Department of Ed in mid-June that they were going to reduce the last payment for state aid on June thirtieth by one point seven million dollars. And that they were going to supplement that by giving us federal money sometime in the middle of July. Um, as of this afternoon at three o'clock, I have an email from the Rhode Island Department of Ed who stated point blank, "We have not sent out guidelines on how to access the one point seven million dollars. We will let you know as soon as we know." So our projection preliminary year-end does not include that one point seven million dollars. So state aid was in fact cut one point seven million dollars. So if I factor that number into the two point seven that we reported on June ninth, we would all be in agreement that we had planned on approximately a million, uh, a million sixty-two thousand dollars of surplus as of June thirtieth. So that is the backdrop. I am providing you this evening an analysis of where we came in on all those categorical pieces that I've identified. And collectively, we have actually achieved nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of surplus. So we're off by about ninety-six thousand dollars of what I said in June ninth to where we stand today. The pluses and minuses are listed on your rosters. Um, one of the significant cost drivers where I had said that all the other salary items out of the three or four major items I had before you, we were going to hopefully save two hundred thousand, when in fact we spent six hundred thousand dollars. And that's broken down by, we didn't achieve the two hundred thousand that I said we were hoping to achieve. And then on top of that, our vacation payouts, um, were a hundred and forty thousand above budget. Um, our department heads and class overages and class covers were all over budget. Um, and so collectively those one, two, three, four, five items drove an eight hundred thousand dollar differential from where we were going to land. The upside is all the other lines throughout the district, we had some pluses, we had some minuses. But we ended up saving overall five hundred and six, five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars across everything else that we manage outside of these fifteen lines that I talked about back on June ninth. So overall, we achieved what we had stated we were looking to achieve, which would be, um, a hundred, a million dollars or thereabouts. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I tried to explain the reason why that we're deferring the million seven. Um, when we get into the twenty-one budget, I am going to take a little sidetrack and talk about the finance subcommittee from the task force and what that budget looks like. Um, but let it be said that I really believe the million seven that's been deferred to the middle of July is going to be the pocket of money that's going to be needed to pay for opening of schools because we have not budgeted in our local budget the cost that you heard about earlier this evening about how are we going to open schools successfully? And so, um, I'll dive into that a little bit more when we get into twenty twenty-one. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions about our, um, preliminary year-end numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrucci, um, just, what, it's my understanding that we have a budget to open, that we need fifteen million dollars. So how is one point seven going to do it?
It ain't going to do it.
Thank you.
We're, we're absolutely waiting for guidance as to is, are there other pockets of money coming out of the CARES Act? Or is, is what has been told us already is all that's available? Um, again, that's going to impact our conversation in the very next item. That's why I just wanted to be able to be sure people are comfortable and recognize state aid did go down. We are not recognizing that million seven coming in for FY twenty. And I'm going to stand on that because there are some folks who might say, well, put the constant C will make the surplus be a million seven higher. All that's going to do is push the surplus into this year. And either we use it to, to support the local budget, which gives us zero money to open schools. Or you're gonna, and then the answer is, well, if you got a surplus, roll forward, you might as well use it. So it's, it's, it's neither here nor there. It's six one half of those in the other. I think we all need to stay focused on this makes sense for June thirtieth. This makes sense to open schools and this is what we need from COVID guidelines, which is an add-on. If we keep those three pockets in our mind, I think it'll be real easy for folks to do pluses and minuses as we move forward over the next month.
The news gets better and better, Mr. Ferrucci. Why say that facetiously? What happened, uh, with the vacation payouts? Why were they over by one hundred and forty K?
Um, that had to do with the numbers of folks that end up working straight and didn't have the time to be able to get out, um, when they, when they retire. We had an elevation of retirements in December. Because under our current procedures, if you're retiring, um, you get your payout in, in, in December. So a lot of folks would not, they would, they're using their accrued vacation from the year before during this, the year leading into their retirement year. They get their full bank of vacation July first, they retire in December and they take that payment. So if we had a lot more folks retire, um, they got their payment. Um, typically don't get enough, uh, breakage to earn all that back, um, in the salary side.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Are there any questions from the committee? Are there any questions from the committee?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Mr. Testa.
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Ferrucci, so the state aid that was cut, the one point seven, I agree, we, we can't count it into the past fiscal year's budget because if we knew we were getting it, if we're absolutely guaranteed we were getting it in relatively short order, we could put it in that budget. But so it was cut and we don't know when we're going to get it. So, right, so it doesn't make any sense to, to artificially inflate a surplus from last year, right? And with respect to your amount about opening, I mean, every single district that has put together a plan is going to have a price tag. So there's not a single district that has operating money to, to cover what it's going to cost opening come August.
Correct.
So, um, okay, um, the chair asked the same question I was going to ask on, on the, um, the buyout. So that's, that's directly related to retirements, right? Right, okay. Uh, and that, that was the only thing I had. Um, I just wanted to clarify that one point seven because some people might think that, you know, you should, you should take it, book, book it for last year, but it wouldn't be prudent to, to do that. Thank you.
Absolutely right. Are there any other, uh, question or comments from members of the committee? Are there any comments or questions from, uh, any administrators? Or superintendent? Okay, Mr. Ferrucci, thank you very much for that information. At this time, we'll move on to item ten, discussion action. FY twenty twenty-one superintendent recommended revised local budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try not to get too deep, but there's a lot here and so we probably will dive into the deep end for a few minutes.
That's what you need to do. We need to understand.
Yep. Um, our FY twenty-one budget as adopted by the school committee on June twenty-four is presented to you this evening. And what we've done is created a revised recommended budget column. And I've inserted the known changes since that point in time coming forward to tonight. Okay? And so you have before you a document that has all these numbers that I'll speak to in general. You have a column that shows what our total revenue is. Well, we just reported that as of FY twenty twenty, we have a surplus of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Those funds will be re-appropriated fund balance to the school department by the city council after the audit is completed later this year. But typically the school committee has adopted a revised budget based on our preliminary year-end with the expectation that those funds would become available through the course of the year and plans their budget accordingly. And I stand by that, uh, procedure this evening. So I can firmly tell you that we expect the nine hundred and sixty-five thousand and with any luck, we'll be a little better than that and we'll make those adjustments come November. So my recommendation is to increase your revenue by nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, recognizing those funds. I also went down into the expenditure lines. And so some of the notable things that are, we know as a definite are this. Special education needs five additional TAs, teaching assistants due to programmatic demands. Earlier in the conversations with special education leading up to this, there was discussions about the feasibility of having five co-tort teacher assistance positions not be filled and, and make the new positions that are needed for programmatic need. Um, but I'm here before you this evening to say, all the co-torts are still currently in the local budget and we need to add these five additional positions. So I'm adding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on that. Um, workers' compensation. This is a wonderful moment for Warwick Public Schools. Okay?
Thank you.
The Rhode Island Interlocal Trust for the last three or four years was charging workers' comp premiums in excess of one point one million dollars because of our, um, experience modification and their premium costs. Beacon Mutual has been with us two years. This past year, their experience has been considerably less in costs. They've also negotiated and analyzed claims that were driving our experience mod and we're able to get experience mod dramatically lowered. They notified us about two weeks ago that we would be able to save a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars off of our budgeted amount. I had notified just on Monday that it may be even more than that. At the present time, I'm saying we only need a budget of, um, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings on workers' comp. I can't thank the safety committee that's been in place for the last couple of years for all of their work. It's a joint effort between administration and the Wise Union leadership because that's where the predominance, well, that is, that's the, the population that's covered. Um, and so we've made some really dramatic changes in, in our, um, education. Buying cafeteria tables, folks, has saved us dramatically. People are not getting hurt moving the old style cafeteria tables around. So those investments are paying off significantly. So I want to thank everybody, including Beacon Mutual for that success. I have on the table this evening, the transportation contract per Ms. Machado's presentation of reinstating running the buses the way we typically run them, which her chart said we needed to add six point one million dollars for needing the sixty-three regular ed buses, et cetera. And that, so that's in. And lastly, last school committee meeting, you approved our, our insurance, our liability auto and property. And I stated at that time that we were going to save seven thousand two hundred dollars. So that was a savings. So the net cost increase of five point nine million dollars is being offset by the nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of surplus that came forward. That leaves us four point nine million dollars worth of something to be able to balance your budget. What I put together, the last sheet in the packet is a compilation of my understanding of all the various discussions that have taken place over the last three to four months about what additional cuts we may be able to entertain. And so rather than prioritizing them, and we haven't had time to vet this with even the finance committee, I'm providing a roster of potential cuts by object code. Okay, and there's a lot of really bad stuff in here, folks. There's things that I'm not advocating that we can do. Nothing is taken lightly. However, we have a four point nine million dollar issue to contend with. And so what's on the roster are over seven million dollars worth of potential items, um, of which probably only about four of them are easy. And what I mean by that is, um, if you'll notice, there's one line that professional development substitutes. On Tuesday night, July fourteenth, we approved doing the calendar with PD and there was conversations, does that mean we can save some PD substitutes? And in conversation with Ms. Immolat, we in fact agreed we could save twenty thousand dollars because of that calendar change. So that's a line on there, no harm, no foul. So it's on there for consideration. Um, but pretty much everything else affects somebody. I did include under transportation, if the school committee wanted to entertain bumping that point two five walking distance, that we would be able to save two point four million dollars. Um, and that could be a bulk of what you want to, um, consider. We can do line by line. We could entertain any other items that may not be listed on the document. And the only thing I would want to forewarn folks is this. I know sometimes we want to get to a certain point and say, well, we're going to just call that contingency and we're going to bracket it and we're going to minus $2 million bucks and hopefully we'll get there. In order for us to be compliant with state law, I need a plan. What's the plan that we're going to subscribe to? So as long as there's a plan, we can provide it as a balanced budget. I can then report back to you in November whether we achieved the plan. And in November, I would be able to pick up on any of the changes that took place during the district. So as an example, we have on here, you know, approached the unions for some kind of concession and we have one particular item for a million dollars. If that's part of the plan tonight, to go ask for a concession, that doesn't obligate us to do anything other than that's the plan. So I would report back to you in November that, hey, breakage went up by a million dollars. So we saved a million, but we didn't achieve the plan for the union concession and it cost us a million, no harm, no foul. If you understand that concept, that's what the plan has to be. So what I want you to know is you don't have to make a hot and fast cut tonight that will harm folks, but I do need a plan. I can't take a bracketed number and call it a bracketed number. Lastly, as I wanted to put it in the right context, we are in the local budget. The local budget was built based on the schools opening with no COVID guidelines in place at all. Okay? The task force, subcommittees, all created a budget request. There is a budget document. They did it for each scenario. We also asked them to prioritize it. What was mandatory in order to open or do virtual learning, what would be needed? And then what would be desired? And so we asked them to give us those three parameters on top of the three plans. And that's 11 subcommittees. So the finance subcommittee reviewed 99 different budget options to come up with what we're presenting. And to what Mr. Tester and actually Ms. Backus, I'm sorry, had mentioned earlier, opening schools is going to cost $15 million. Okay? The bulk of that expense is salary and fringe benefits. Our concerns are this, keeping the buildings cleaner, we're going to require 80-some-odd custodians. Every bus is required to have a monitor on it. So unlike now where it's just the small children where we have a monitor because of the face mask coverage, because of the social distancing, making sure children sitting in every bus seat, that the CDC's recommendation is there needs to be an adult to take care of the students to make sure they're complying with social distancing outside of the drive because the driver has to be watching the road. So we need to add it. And a bus can't drive without one. And similar to the crossing guard issue, we are having a huge difficulty in hiring these folks for four hours or five hours at minimum wage and being involved particularly on buses of this nature. So we expect lots of problems. So a lot of our budgets included overstaffing to cover when people need to be out sick themselves. So an excuse, we cannot drive a bus without a monitor. Well, if I only have 60 monitors and one of them calls in sick and I don't have enough depth, then we need to have somebody in a bullpen someplace. So we're actually talking about trying to recruit 90. So we'd have half coverage to make covers. 20% to 25% absenteeism, we're looking at 12% to 15% staff outings as a monitor, for instance. And when they quit, they quit on a Friday because they got yelled at by a parent or a student and said, I won't be in on Monday. So you need that coverage. You're going to hear that kind of issue across the board. There's concerns about not having enough teacher subs. So there's recommendations to put in assigned substitutes per building. And so you make prior commitments that you'll have adults showing up so that if expecting people not to show up to work, you'll have coverage in the building. And we're going to be in competition. Just last night, I was watching the news and Providence was talking about the same thing. They'll be out recruiting monitors. They're going to be out recruiting substitute teachers. They're going to create deeper pools because they're all going to be experiencing it. So we're going to be competing with those entities on getting people into our system. 10.1, excuse me, $11.5 million salaries and fringe benefits out of the 15 million. The balance of that is the cleaning supplies, the masks, et cetera. So I got this budget in front of you now that has a $4.9 million problem if the busing were to stay. Ms. Machado's worksheet says if we need to move to COVID, we got a couple of options. If the budget has 6 million in it today, we could run 63 buses. The walking distance may have to be a mile or so in order to make it work. Or like Providence was talking about last night, we'd have to have the bus go out twice. Bring the first group of kids in, drive back out, get another group of kids in. That would create longer staggered times of arrival and departure. All those pieces are fermenting underneath the hood. So to try and keep it simple, COVID-related guidance, $15 million. Running the schools, the way we always used to do it, is the budget that's on the table. Right now, the only thing I'm aware of that Ride has told us, the million seven is coming forward and we're going to get guidance on how to access it. And we got a million four that's also now just been announced. Dr. Cecil sent out the application. And we need to write that application. However, out of that million four, we're required to share some of that with our non-public schools. I expect about a 20% allocation to the schools like Bishop Pendrick in because again, these are federal dollars that are following federal Title I and Title II guidelines, which means there is a share component to it. I got confirmation today, we don't have to share the 1.7 because it was a replacement for state aid, but the 1.4 we do. So in round numbers, and I don't care if I account for it last year and we carry forward softwares of surplus or if we put it into this year's budget to reduce the $4 million so we don't have as much need. But in round numbers, I got 1.1, 1.7, that's 2.8 to go against 15 million dollars of opening schools. And I got a local budget that needs 4.9. If we can take all the federal dollars and put it on the local budget, you still have $15 million to open school. So that's why it doesn't matter, in my opinion, where we account for it, as long as you know what the four marbles are that are on the table that we're talking about tonight. So at this point, I would have to defer that if transportation were considered and that be the 2.4 of the 4.9, then we would be about $2.5 million away. What other items could we potentially consider? I did put in the co-taught TAs. Last year, that was considered by the school committee. Special Ed says that those classrooms could operate without them. I know it's good to have them. I understand the impact on instruction, but they are noted there. Again, we put a whole roster. I hate doing this. Breaks my heart. But we attempted to cut sports. We knew the community outcry. That's still a viable question if you folks want to entertain that. We attempted to cut second shift custodians. That was an outcry. God forbid we cut second shift custodians going into a COVID period. That ain't going to happen. That's why they're not here this evening. These are new things that haven't been talked about. I feel for the mechanics, the carpenters, the plumbers. They're on the roster. Horrible, horrible if we got to go there. And I can admit that. And this is not a school committee request in any way, shape or form. I'm just putting out there what we potentially could do. But if we chose to that path, you absolutely have to give consideration of, we won't fix anybody's walls. We won't move anything. We won't have classrooms change and all those kinds of things that the staff currently do. But we will need somebody to come in when a boiler doesn't fire up. And so we will have to have some kind of provision. And right now, I show like $800,000 needed, now $860,000. It's off the top of my head, folks. I haven't gone out and priced this. We haven't gone and talked with anybody. But it's just an allocation to say, we would have to make arrangements to have emergency response some way, shape or form and call them on an emergency-only basis. Will the schools be disrupted? Absolutely. Our mechanics work more than 40 hours a week of providing services for us. You're not going to replace it. They're there when we have the snow removal issues. You're going to lose that component. It's not something that's taken lightly. It's not recommended, but it is an option. And where do you go? Cut the pension again. You did it once, we can do it again. So that's why they're there. I'm not recommending anything. It's up for conversation. But we got to get down to that, what do we do with the 4.9? I can't just bracket that number. And again, the transportation issue, we got to make a commitment in some way, shape or form. We're the only district that would not have transportation as part of the puzzle piece of making schools open if we just continue to say, no, we're not doing regular aid. Because even if I went and got federal dollars to help pay for that, we got to tell the bus company, it's going to be 50. It's going to be all 60 or it's going to be 40 and you got 20 to redeploy if necessary. That's what we got to do. So it's a difficult bind we're in. But like I said, if there's something in here that we think we can pursue and want to make a plan on it, or if we've missed anything, if there's any other opportunities, our ears are all open. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Frucci, would not going to school on Mondays and only 50 kids or actually half of that on the school bus, would that make a difference?
I would have to defer to Ms. Machado. I don't know if she can do that.
Buses don't have to run that day, so.
There would be a cost savings on the day that there is no children being transported. But as far as half of the, you know, student population coming in, I can't see the buses being any less because they still live everywhere.
So is it possible, Kim, in theory, that the $2.4 million cut would work on a four-day school calendar? So that we could possibly, even if we ran 63 buses, but only four days? I say that with this caution. This caution is, if they find the vaccine, the federal dollars go away and now we only have a budget that's only going to be at $4 million of regular rate busing, do we then tackle the quarter-mile walking to stay within a budgeted dollar? That would be my caution. So I don't want to embed COVID assumptions here and then not have COVID assumptions applied and then be stuck. My concern.
This district pays a very large chunk for busing. Over $9 million a year. We need to do something. I mean, part of it is because the airport is in the middle of the city. There are a lot of issues, but that is the primary issue. I do think we need to look at increasing everything to a quarter mile in order to save some busing money that we need for education and other supplies. How do other people feel about that?
Madam Chair, I agree. I said earlier that I didn't think we had to decide this tonight. I'm more than comfortable deciding that particular issue tonight. Increasing that walking distance and then I have more to say about other stuff later.
Thanks.
We don't have to decide, but we need to, unless I misunderstood, Mr. Frucci, we need to have like some plan in place, correct?
Well, I think the big hinge is on the $2.4 million in busing. Okay? If we make that cut right now with the long-term plan of probably being the quarter-mile reduction. But if we open with COVID guidelines and we end up with Mondays closed, we may be able to run more buses for the four days because we'll make it, the savings on the Monday closed. So that's where we can be flexible of, you know, what is the pool of dollars available for running transportation? And then you can figure out how to do it. My piece is, if we find the vaccine and then they move forward and say, okay, October 1st, it's going, everything goes back to normal. Oh, by the way, the federal dollars now evaporate because you're not going to run a school during COVID, that we got to be prepared running Monday through Friday. Not likely, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, that this is about establishing your operational budget. And it also prepares us for next year because next year, this is going to be a baseline of how you want to operate. And so you really don't want to artificially cut these numbers and then have to struggle with reinstating next year. So it's a two-year prong issue. But I get the possibility of what we can do with a $4 million increase in busing and then answer the details as it goes along.
So, Mr. Frucci, I think I just, I want to try to just clarify this for those people who might be watching because essentially, if in July or April, whenever we decided to cut transportation, okay, we knew that that may not be a permanent thing. That was to deal with one set of issues. And we knew coming forward that we were going to be facing some of these inherent problems that we have with the budget anyway. But if we opted to stand by that cut, we jettison the 63 buses, first student, we'll assign him to someone else because I would do that if I were them as well. Then, as you say, if there is a vaccine and then the dollars go away and you have to now run a non-COVID school, we have no buses.
Correct.
Right? And then we have no buses for sports either if sports runs. We'll have no, right, we'll have no late bus, we'll have no bus at all. So my question for you or Ms. Machado would be, okay, if we restored the funds, we're going to run our 63 buses. We still have to come up with a way of who's deciding, who decides who rides, right? Don't we still have to do that?
When we get into the COVID question, yes.
Right now, no.
Right. We would basically be playing a plan of however we ran them last year is what we're going to replicate and be prepared for and then come up with a COVID plan off of that. Whether we need to add more buses, extend walking distance for a short time because you can only put so many kids on, et cetera. We'll be back before you when we say this is what we're actually going to do.
And that would be in the next month, wouldn't it?
Two, next two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks. So we're going to know, right? So my point is, we know we're not going to be able to bus the same amount of kids that we always bus. We know that, right? Because according to your projections, to do, to comply with the 24 kids per bus and our current walking distances, we need 189 buses. So we all know that that's not happening. So the question is going to be, if we keep the funding that allocates the 63, how do we best get to that 63? And that's where all the other work that I presume you've already done would come in. And how much of an extra distance, a walking distance do we need? And that's just a temporary thing, right? It's only temporary for as long as we're in this COVID situation.
On the COVID side, yes.
Yeah. So, and again, so let's just for the sake of discussion, we get started and we realize, you know what? Okay, we have to increase the walking distance by X in order to accommodate our buses and our kids. So we know kids are going to be shed, they're not going to, who previously were bused are not going to be bused now. And then let's say a vaccine hits in November. Come the first of the year, we're back to a normal school year. Right? We would not necessarily be keeping that same distance anymore, right? Because.
I think we would. I think we would have to continue to keep that distance for the remainder of the year at the very least. And that would certainly be, you know.
Yeah, but in other words, but if the vaccine hit and all of a sudden, Tony, to your point, if if all of a sudden, we're being told whether it's the state or the federal government says, you're back to normal now, that could be February, right? Where you don't have to practice the distancing in the classrooms and the mask wearing and all that. I would assume that your busing will go back to what you had before.
Actually, the busing will go back to whatever you authorize.
And they'll be able to put 50% more kids on the bus.
Right.
So that takes care of that.
Yeah, and we would be conforming with the newer walking distances that the new non-COVID revised walking.
That's why, exactly. Getting lost in the COVID conversation, getting back to the local. I think the piece is, if we're going to attempt to save the $2.4 million, that becomes our budget number of how we're going to operate normally. So that becomes our new normal. And so to your point, anything that deviates from that in the future, we would roll back to this new normal that we're trying to attempt to do tonight.
Right. So that's, I am. Right. So, and that, that's, I understand that. Um, so I, I think again, we're back to where we were a couple of months ago, but we, we need to have buses and, and even and even if we, we restore it.
I'm gonna move on, Mr. Testa.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody else on the committee that would like to speak? Ms. Cobden?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Fruchy, um, I'm gonna play another scenario. We don't have a vaccine. Things get worse and we, we, we get these buses. Because I understand that they need to know because they, they're a business, they need to operate and people all want buses right now. Um, what happens if we all don't go back to school? Are we paying them any part of the contract?
Our, our current contract, which expires at the end of this upcoming school year, June thirty, twenty twenty-one, um, has a provision of notification which we exercised um this past spring. So there wasn't an obligation because there was no need. The, the, the requirement is to provide the buses when needed. Um, right now, they're questioning what's your need and so.
Are they gonna have the same provision in there?
Yeah.
Are they gonna change it? I'm just curious because they could totally wanna put a different provision in now.
Provision is in under the contract for now, until next June thirty.
Correct.
Okay, I, that was, that was my question. I just wanted to know i- if we'd be at some, some, any, any type of loss.
Not at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Please, Mr. Cornell.
So, um, Mr. Fruchy, so, um, like I saw, um, uh, you gave me a list of made a proposed cuts, so, but whatever cuts we make, is it true that we're not gonna be even close to the fifteen million dollars we need?
Correct. The fifteen million dollars is a whole separate issue. Here's what I'm anticipating taking place. This evening, we ratify a revised budget that's balanced. That's what I'm hoping. That becomes our baseline for operating our schools. In the next week or so, we should get guidance from the state as to the one point seven million that I talked about. The one point four in the co- piece that we have to give to non-publics, so I'm thinking it's one point one. And then maybe we'll find out if there's any more money in the billion dollars of KIA money that's sitting at the State House. Because as what was described earlier tonight, our plan is going into the state tomorrow. By Monday, they're supposed to have all these plans, I would assume, budgets from all the districts in the state. They will have all the information, what it's gonna cost to open schools. I believe they're waiting to get that information before they finally announce the final allocation of the KIA dollars. Because there's also been communication since mid-June that the state aid number that's currently in our budget that's here this evening is going to change, but they can't tell us how or what. But you gotta realize the state, the way I'm reading in the paper, is facing an eight hundred million dollar issue this current bill, uh, book, uh, fiscal year. And so they need all info. So I think they're getting all the stuff about opening schools in a pile. They hate hundred million dollars that they need to operate the state, how much they owe the schools and state aid. With those three piles of information, then they're gonna tell us, all right, you're gonna be able to get money to do this, to open schools, but your state aid is gonna be that, or you're gonna have surplus last year that you can use this year. I think all of that stuff is gonna start to come out in the next week to ten days. My intent would be to come back before the school committee and say, here's the plan that the, the task force is going with, the hybrid, four days a week. Here's the budget we put in as a task force. It was fifteen million dollars, but because we dropped the day, we're gonna tweak it. I will give you a task force budget, twelve million, fifteen million, sixteen million, whatever the number is. And then be able to tell you, and the state's giving us one point seven, one point one, oh, and they found another half a million dollars. Or whatever it is, maybe they found twelve million dollars. And, and then that would be the time for the school committee to make that announcement that economically you can't do it. But at least you got two of the models stabilized and will know what the variables are that we don't know today. And then you can make an informed decision. I expect all of that to happen in the next two weeks.
That'll be good to when we finally get the information, but right now, like, we, they don't have that plan right now and they're e- expect us to bounce budget and it's, it's just not feasible. Like fifteen million dollars, we're nowhere close. Whatever cuts we make, we cannot get even close to that. And I, I'm not, tonight, I'm, I can't support any of these cuts because these cuts hurt people and it accomplishes nothing. So I just, I just don't see it at the point of even balancing budget right now until we get all the facts. We have one point seven million dollars from Riot that they still haven't given us yet. We just, we're not ready to bounce budget. Not all the facts are together and I just, I cannot support balancing anybody tonight because we just don't have the information.
Mr. Cornell, Mr. Cornell, we're not uh necessarily gonna balance the budget tonight, okay? We do have to make some assumptions and we do have to make some decisions about things. And this is the hard part about being you, being me, being Mr. Testa, Mr. Adams, Ms. Cobden, okay? But we are called to do that. So we can make some assumptions, okay? We can make some assumptions that I don't think are on the sheet. We can look at retirements and increase our assumption about breakage.
That's a good one.
Which, which would be, you know, certainly, um, that is one of my recommendations. I do believe we need to look at the transportation and increase it by a quarter. I, of a mile. I also believe that we absolutely need to do the opt-out. Soon as possible because we have lots and lots of, of students who don't ride the bus. And yet we provide bus service for them. And then if you stand, then I know you have. I know you've been there at Tollgate and Winman and seen buses roll in that are, you know, not as full as one would expect because there are so many people not using bus service. Uh, and if we do the opt-out forms, we can find out a little bit better and hopefully, you know, the community will understand what we're going through and they will answer that and let us know, well, yeah, we're gonna opt out. You know, we drive our children all the time or, you know, our children have a car or whatever may be the situation. I think in, in addition, in looking at this, I think that we can look at the substitute PD coverage. Substitute PD coverage uh for department level subs and staff PD and everything, that's not needed. Because the way that the calendar is created, it's a separate day. Subs aren't needed because it's built in already by the state calendar. That's a savings that we can look at. Other services, uh, item five, three, four, zero, six. Eight hundred and sixty thousand for emergency support, snow removal to cover twenty-four staff cuts. If we don't cut the staff, we can cut that. And that's, that's a pretty big nut. And that, there, I think we could potentially cut, potentially, I'm not sure, because we are in the middle of being sued. But we could cut the contribution to the private pension a little bit. I am not in favor of cutting it completely, but we could cut it some and ha- find some savings there. Uh, we can certainly, this is an emergent time. We can cut five, seven, two, oh, two building improvements, toll gate, bridge, window repairs. We can cut equipment requests. We can cut all furniture except lunch tables, special ed and new free keys. We can cut security cameras. I'm not sure what the data center is. I need an answer on that, but we can cut all those expenditures. They don't hurt anybody. And I know that you don't wanna hurt anybody in your cuts, nor do I, nor does anybody else. So I'm looking at things that we can cut that aren't gonna make a, a direct hit on anybody's job or anything like that. But it is our job to do this. And we can also make some assumptions, like I said, about breakage, about, you know, retirees and things like that. For some people, some people may decide to retire because it's just, they may be older, they may be compromised and they may feel like it's too big a risk. They're gonna call it quits. And that is a reasonable decision for anyone to make who's in that position.
Madam Chair, can I just summarize what I heard the last few minutes?
Yes, Mr. Fruchy.
Thank you. Um, the various individual lines that you identified, the PD and, and um the equipment, et cetera, um, that all tallies about a half a million dollars. Um, if we were just to reduce the bus traffic budget by the two point four million dollars and then figure out how we're gonna execute that and make a commitment to uh, uh, first student tomorrow of the thirty buses anyway and then we're gonna work towards whatever um we need to do, that's two point four million dollars. I'm thinking from what you said about breakage, it's fifty thousand dollars a position if a teacher retires. If we were to consider maybe COVID-related breakage as part of your plan, um, because that's not an identified on account, it's, it's one we're hoping for, we could put in a million dollars. So that million dollars in breakage, the two point four in bussing, the five hundred thousand in line item expenses, that would only leave us about a million dollars shy of achieving the four point nine million dollars to balance. Could I suggest that we just put that the unions be approached for concessions for the balance as part of your plan? So our plan would be about a two million dollar plan between breakage and union concession, rather than specifically saying it's the pension that we're gonna cut or, or some other cost that's on the chart. But just have some way, shape or form, and then it can be brought back to you in November whether we achieve that plan. What could perhaps possibly happen is this whole thing with the million seven and the million one could come into existence and then it may be a moot point come November. You'd have a balanced local budget with the plan. And to Mr. Cornell's point, we will be looking at approximately a fifteen million dollar budget for COVID with currently about a three million dollar revenue uh to apply towards it. And then you make a decision whether we can economically do it. I don't see a lot of people getting hurt with that method, but at least we have a plan that we can defend and that will buy us six months to try and execute the plan. Does that seem reasonable? Is that what I heard you say?
That, I mean, we could cut the entire non-staffing budget. We could cut the sub-PD coverages. And yes, and then make some assumptions about the uh breakage and the
Possibility.
Union concessions. And that will get us some time to actually make those decisions once we have more information.
Yes.
Does anybody have any comment? Anybody from the committee?
So, uh, yeah, I was kinda um logged out because of internet connectivity issues. What did, what happened in the last few minutes or so?
Mr. Fruchy, would you uh roll that forward for him?
I'd be happy to. Um, Ms. Backus had identified a number of actual lines, um, which tally just around a half a million dollars, okay?
Are these like not including personnel like they're?
Yes, this is.
They're all non-staffing and
Yes.
Bussing, non-staffing, substitute PD coverages, and then some assumptions.
Okay. So, so that would be the smallest portion. The bussing, we would authorize bussing to start organizing thirty buses. And then if we need to add, that's COVID-related, that's separate and apart. So we, we do the bussing of reducing my request by two point four, but we're actually adding um, three point seven million dollars to bussing. So just let's re- rev- realize what we're talking about. We're adding money to create the regular rate bussing. To what your current budget is. You have zero and now we're gonna add money to it, okay? And then, um, the, there's a plan that we're thinking that teachers will retire because they may not wanna come back to the school. So we're calling it the COVID uh, can, uh, breakage for a million dollars. And then we're gonna seek union concession of a million dollars. That's the plan. So you got a two million dollar plan and you have very specific expenses that we're cutting for two point nine million dollars. And that's how we're gonna balance this evening.
Yeah, and, and I, I would be willing to support it, yeah, as long as it's not cutting any personnel, because I remember seeing that list earlier and I was quite alarmed by what I saw, so.
Yep.
What I'm looking at, Mr. Tester and, and everybody else is not um cutting anybody. It's not cutting any raises. Um, it's not cutting uh any anything that impacts our employees without negotiating with them. Perhaps for some sort of uh cuts.
But, okay, Madam Chair, I follow you.
Determine later.
I follow you, but, but, Mr. Fruchy, you've got, you've got a, in your calculation, there's a million dollar, there's a million dollars with million dollars targeted for discussions with collective bargaining units, correct?
Yes, correctly.
So, all right, so whether it's a million or a million three, it's, it's still part of the plan. Uh, I, I would've gone about it slightly differently. I don't think I'd get the support for it anyway, but I think it's, I think we need to understand though, the fifteen million COVID thing, every single district is facing that same.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
Yeah, so, so we, you know, we have to worry about balance to get started.
We're talking about right now.
Because that's gonna come later, right? They're not gonna let us uh starve for COVID.
We have to balance the budget. We can do it with some assumptions. And we have to do it tonight.
Yeah. And Mr. Fruchy, my question is your, your breakage assumption, what was the number you put on that?
We're gonna put a million dollars. So actually the plan, I'm, I'm defining it as the plan. We're not gonna put in the salary reduction. We're gonna put in a contingency plan of two million dollars, a million of it we're planning on a breakage. Maybe it's a million and a half, maybe a union concession's only a half a million. Um, so between those two pockets, it's a two million dollar plan. And then the balance is line item cut.
And then just, just clarify for me where we are with if this, if we pass it, we approve this, where are we with transportation? How much money are we putting back into transportation?
We're gonna, we're gonna go with the plan of having um twenty-nine buses get scheduled the way Ms. Machado has it presented tonight, okay?
No, we're not. What, Mr. Fruchy?
Yeah.
There are two pieces to this.
Yeah.
Number one, we're gonna do the opt-out. That is, that is, that has to happen.
Yes.
It has to happen very quickly.
Yes.
We need to get that done. So that may save us additional monies. And then we're gonna increase the walking distance by a quarter mile for each uh subset.
My, my, my point is that we're gonna work within the confines of that budget, which is twenty-nine buses. So if we get enough folks who opt out, Ms. Backus, we may not have to go the full quarter mile ad. We may be able to pick up folks going over what we define. If they're crossing over Centerville Road to get to a school, you may decide you wanna pick up those students. We will work within the confines of the budget with the numbers of buses and all of those strategies will be on the table to achieve it, yes. So we recognize that.
Okay. All right, I, I think I'm, I'm getting that now. All right, so we, we're essentially committing to first student for twenty-nine buses. Not the sixty-three that we ran previously because we're increasing the walking distances.
Or some other form of, yes.
Yeah, and then we're gonna get opt-outs and, and everything else, but we don't know what that number's gonna be, but we need to commit to a number of buses. I get it. I get it. And then what we'll do is we're gonna, going to be dealing with, with those twenty-nine buses, how do we do bus runs for COVID?
Correct.
Well, yeah, but we're not there now. We're not talking about COVID at all.
Okay, so Mr. Fruchy, does that get to the four point nine?
I, I concur. That achieves your four point nine this evening, yes.
If you tell me that gets to the four point nine, I will get behind you.
Yes, it does. And we can report back as we proceed with it, but it gives us a point to jump off from.
And, so we didn't cut equipment, right? We didn't, did we? Did we cut the data center?
All non-staffing.
Again, I was, I was, I was using the half million dollars. When I get down into the final details, um, the PD piece and then, um, uh, what, predominantly is the technology security, I heard. But the data center piece, if you look at my footnote, um, technology hardware is cut, um, that would only leave them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in totality. And all the other budget managers have about two twenty-five. That would only leave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for everything. I realize if we're gonna go virtual learning on the COVID and all that, we can grab computer money. They're in the budgets there. I get that piece. But my point tonight is, I'm gonna take the half a million dollars out of these individual lines because I was just rounding them up, rounding them off, um, least impactful, and then the other three big targets. So, you may have identified six hundred grand. I may leave a little bit in equipment, especially if I talk to Ms. Danbrook, she said something like especially if I talk to Ms. Danbrook, she said some of my equipment is opening at, uh, kindergarten.
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned with, with some of those cuts, because, I mean, w- we, we can very broadly say cut that, but I mean, security cameras, okay, I mean, I prefer to have them, but I can understand cutting that, that's tech hardware. The security camera, I think, and tech hardware is a little different from the, from data center. My concern is opening, we have a new IT director coming in, we have more technology demands. I'm not a big fan of cutting tech hardware. A security camera is not, is a little bit different.
Yep.
As, as opposed to if that tech hardware is something that, that serves a, a higher purpose within the tech department.
How about we, uh, make an assumption and we cut, um, ten or fifteen percent across the board on every budget director?
I, I don't like those broad strokes though, Madam Chair, because I, I think for us to say cut ten or fifteen percent, I, I think that's way too broad and I think it's, I think it's reckless to do that.
Ms. Backus, I, I, I'm confident and comfortable that the items that are identified for the half a million, because I didn't hear, cut the capital projects at two hundred thousand this evening. That's gonna stay on the table. That would be something you can consider, maybe reconsider in the next month or so, um, and if you need to redeploy. But targeting the folks that we just identified, we would then open it back up to them to then say, let's say we cut something in equipment because equipment goes. But somebody comes to you and says, I absolutely need this piece of equipment. Then our answer to them is, rather than us cutting you ten percent across everything, go find it someplace else where we left the money and bring that piece over and allow us to do a budget transfer. So they will be participating in reprioritizing what they need. You're not, not allowing them to buy something that's a piece of equipment. You're just gonna identify the equipment's going, but if you need something, go figure it out and come back to us. Rather than, that's why it hasn't been successful when we've done across the board. We hurt too many people and everybody gets hurt and then somebody still has a pocket of money.
That's fine. But you, that's a double negative, so you are allowing them to buy that piece of equipment.
I'm not allowing them.
No, no, I'm.
No, 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 but.
I'm funning with you, man.
They, they, they actually come to you with a budget transfer, so you are aware of that piece. So that's empowering the budget managers, once we release it to them, say, you know, you got a cut, absorb it, now reprioritize and then come back to us with your budget transfers and then you validate it on a transaction by transaction basis.
Well, that's even better if they're working together.
So it's not like it's eliminated, that gives them the opportunity to participate and how to absorb it.
Well, I, I think it's great to encourage people to work together as a team. And if it works, it's fantastic.
Okay, so, um, what, if we approve this and we make these changes to the transportation and the walking distances, um, we're gonna have to notify parents too, right? Because that's, that'll be a change effective.
First, we'll do the opt-out.
Well, it's probably.
I mean, people are gonna know tomorrow, okay? A lot of people are gonna know tomorrow that we're doing this. Um, and we don't have much choice.
And we'll be able to get your real scripted data and, and come prepared, um, by the next meeting. If you guys decide to have a special meeting, because I think once the plan gets announced, maybe we get this, the state funding announced and then the whole next meeting is COVID-related and how that impacts busing and we can just wrap that final piece together and we'll be done.
Mr. Ferrucci, what is our total that we are cutting? With our assumptions and everything?
Four point nine, seven, one, six, eight, six. The shortfall that's on the worksheet right now ultimately is what we're gonna cut.
Okay. Does anybody else from the committee have a comment, question or anything to say about what's going on? Anybody in the administration?
Uh, I'll say something.
Okay, please, Mr. Cobb.
I'm just glad some of the buses are coming back, I think it's essential to a lot of people. And, um, I agree with the opt-out, um, and I agree with Ms. Backus, that needs to be taken care of immediately. So the ones that are in dire need of a bus will hopefully get one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Is there anyone in the administration who would like to say anything?
Madam Chair, given the, um, predicament we are in, I think this, um, series of cuts makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Hennias, is this, from what you can see, is this legal, what we're trying to do tonight?
For not to give legal advice in open session, Madam Chair, but I understand, um, I understand the, the plan that the committee's putting forward. Yep.
Is it somewhat fathomable then?
I understand the committee's, uh, I understand the, the vote, I understand what Mr. Ferrucci's doing and I applaud his creativity and, um, yeah. This'll work.
Glad to you, Mr. Hennias. Thank you. Um. Okay, so I will make a, I will make a motion that we balance the budget with the cuts that we have discussed so far, which will remove four, nine, seven, one, six, eight, six from our from our budget, from our cost at this point in time so that we can move on. And as things change, we will meet, we will discuss and we will, uh, develop plans accordingly. Now have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I know I'm, say again, but just because it's so important, I just ma- make one.
Please.
Okay, um, so, so there's absolutely no personnel in that, um, four point, yeah.
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all, all I needed to know.
Anything else? There being none, I call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Most? Five, zero, motion carries, we have a balanced budget. Thank you all very much. I know it's not easy, but it is a big piece of what we are called to do. So that brings us to future meetings, which at this point, the next school building subcommittee meeting is Tuesday, August fourth, twenty twenty at seven thirty PM. And I believe that is a Zoom, Mr. Ferrucci?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The achievement subcommittee meeting will meet Wednesday, August fifth, twenty twenty at four PM on Zoom. And the next scheduled monthly school committee meeting is slated for Tuesday, August eleventh, twenty twenty on Zoom. And it will start at seven PM or, or thereabouts for the opening session. There being no further business before this committee, I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Please be well and stay well, all.